Hey. All right, we'd like to start this select board meeting on June tenth. And I'd like to start with the warrants since like to start with payroll number one hundred and ten. I'd like to move that we approve. Payroll one ten for one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and forty two cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable number one hundred and eleven. For five thousand six hundred twenty six dollars and seventy seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes for on June third. Twenty twenty four select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Right, moving right along there. We actually have two citizens to choose. And I'll start with you and please give us your name since we're taping and and where you're from.
Awesome. So my name is Damian Rice. So here today on the yeah for protecting fishing heritage foundations, we're nonprofit. And our entire goal is to fight industrial scale aquaculture. We need support, same scale aquaculture is part of the reason why we oppose industrial scale. Because right now in the state of Maine, anyone from thing there in the world, from China, Canada, in home for a thousand acres. They can lease up to a thousand acres of main ocean for aquaculture. And it's not really a problem on Westport, well, it's not. One guy and doing a small little, small scale thing, which is totally cool. I love that. And I'm planning on doing something like that in the future myself. Cause I'm a fisherman, I'm a big one here. But the reason that it's so important for towns to start getting, you can be aware of this, aquaculture is ramping up. In areas, there's more and more people are getting into it. And there's no running race, you took a time to claim race, market fits them in the law, certainly. From some people's house, agriculture happened on a large scale. And to be honest, there's no studies or even, you know, consideration into the impacts on the other fisheries from aquaculture from the state's perspective. They're totally for just wholesaling aquaculture. There's a lot of big money behind it. And so we're here just protecting, make sure that's not repeating. And we're making sure that each, each power, each local power actually does say what happens in their waters. Because it's the biggest point of contention is the state says, you know, some kind of waters can cause the impact of some kind of water. Is technically under their jurisdiction jurisdiction. And because of that, if an aquaculture wants to put a lease in that kind of area, the town doesn't really have a say over it. It's all up to state. And so I've seen countless times, I go up and down the state of Maine to many coastal towns and talk with people. And I've seen many times where the fishermen said, you know, we fish this area. You know, it's not all year round, but it's four months out of the year and this is good. This is where a lot of our income comes from. And the state pretty much ignored. I don't know why they reconsider it. It's not even in their statutes or the regulation to say you can't have aquaculture in proximity to a local fisher. There's nothing that says that. So. That's the problem we've been seeing and it's really getting worse because more and more people are getting into it. And so that's kind of where we're stepping in and saying, let's talk to the local municipalities and, you know, make them aware that they actually do have, have a work, you know, comes from ordinance. And so we drafted up and Smith. What sounds you have approved for, you know, I've been through a lawyer. And it's all legally sound and everything, but we encourage towns, if they have resources and they want to do it. To come up with their own ordinance that interested in this kind of thing. And so on town, what they do is they'll take a lot of stuff from our ordinance, give them some of it and and stuff. And it's kind of usually how the process works, but in the smaller towns that don't have resources. And basically what it says is it's giving you guys, you know, authority to say, this is what we want in our waters, aquaculture, and this is what we don't want. And the main thing is industrious, you know, so then we define industrials as five acres or more. Can be very small for an area or it can be pretty large, all depends on the area. And that's why, you know, it tells towns. It's not you guys, what you want. And then be clear, you can have up to five or ten five acre plots, as long as they're not right next to each other, it's still considered small. Personally, I don't think you need that much acreage if you want to make a living. It's more, it's more like if you're a big business and you want to stay on top and not be working from your shelf. That's where the problems come from. And aside from like the ecological interactions and even negative benefits, many of the facts that people consider to happen. Don't even be considered or studied. The biggest thing that we might want to say is if you want small scale aquacultures to be able to continue to thrive. Oh, economy, you can't allow big, big scale farms. Help them keep them. And now they're saying maybe you can make a living doing. You know, we have a huge, say a forty acre lease in the Point Bay. I was planning out there. It's forty acres. Yeah. And it's not uncommon if you go up and down the coast, like it's getting, they get.
Fish farms?
So there's two kinds of, well, there's some aquaculture, but there are two main kinds right now are finfish, which is the same department.
Right.
That was in the Northeast. So all the way down is, you know, so it's a lot of work. This is because the fish farm is definitely probably have. Companies unfortunately, and they've been known for a long time. The other kind of aquaculture that is becoming more dominant is oyster and.
Right. Yeah, that was kind of big.
It's, there's many in Damaskata, it's flooding, that's why I'm going there too. A lot of people in the town very, very concerned about the expansion. Like they couldn't even get. They couldn't even get, you know, EMS, you know, rescue services kind of never fast enough.
Installations blocking navigation.
There's just too many of these oysters. Yeah.
Cause I would think that would be something that that would actually be prohibited in interest in their plan.
And proving bad enough. That is, that's, that's absolutely. Move around license to make sure you're not competing on the other little waters, technically the leases. But when we're dealing with certain areas, especially the dammed spot, how wide your channel is, a lower tide, you know, you can't, you can't have to say. Unless you don't know the exact details, I was at a meeting in Damaskata and one of the emergency personnel came up and spoke about that publicly. And we're like, you know, we see this as an issue at several times where you have a slow response. That's just like one thing. Uh, but yeah, and back to the whole Brunswick thing.
What is that? Forty acres? What are they doing there?
They're doing oyster aquaculture in McQuaid Bay. And it's nothing against oysters, oyster are the greatest, but it's the size of things that the problem. Yes.
That's insane.
Yes, and that, actually, I know. I, I'll get pretty heated even thinking about it because I was planning in McQuaid Bay. Four months straight, I'm going to give, and pretty much in two years, we lost seventy to eighty percent of our clams. Behind walls, taking my boat every day from the landing, going past this guy's oyster farm. The out, it's an outlandish spawn and it all started around his oyster farm. So we don't have the proof to say this is definitive what happened, but. My guess is it definitely had, it definitely had some sort of, I've been fighting, this is another reason why I'm getting out of Brunswick too, is because I had to put my neck on the line to, you know, try and get the town officials to do stuff about this because the guy that owns it is actually the coastal resource manager. So he's the one who is staffed. So there's a lot of stuff going on there. I don't want to get into it because a lot of it is personal, but that's how I got involved. We lost a lot of clams. I'm not sure if it came, all of them was, you know, having too many organisms in one area. Because what is between the water to do? Well, we have two organisms in one area and it's definitely, it's not flushing properly. It's such nutrients, that's the major driver factor for all the wounds. And that's what I saw and I talked about the ball and all this stuff. So.
Well, I think it's, I think it's great that you're going around and talking to municipalities because this is, this is, I mean, the oyster thing. What's it been in the last, what, five, six years? And I think that these kinds of things, you know, everything's changing so fast and towns like don't even like know how to deal with it until it's.
They're not prepared until all of a sudden you have a big lease and people are like, whoa, what is this?
Right. So, so what you're doing is, is great, letting people know because that's the best. Defense right there to start with.
Yeah, it's honestly, it's tough too, because the state is coming out sometimes in response to all their areas and nonprofits. You guys don't have legal jurisdiction of what you're doing. We still have the jurisdiction, which technically is true, but thankfully.
On the waters.
Yeah, yeah.
Some type of waters, right.
But in our ordinance, it gives you, it gives you the power enough. This time they were a whole rule state, which is, you know, it gives municipalities authority over state law in certain areas. And what will happen, and this does scare a lot of towns, is if you guys say, okay, we're adopting these ordinance, then some group comes in and it's like, we have a lot more than five acres. Going in like twenty, thirty, forty. You're gonna say, no, we're not, not letting you have them. What could happen is the state then would say, okay, we'll already sue the town, that's not an ordinance. The town is mostly, the state is the one. No one's saying it because I'm, you know, make up, because a lot of towns, they get scared of that fact. But it's not in the best interest for states to sue towns over this because it's already been an issue that's been widely documented. And there's a lot of place for fishermen. It's a really, 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 for them to see towns lower. Fisheries, fisheries, fisheries and actually protecting fisheries and stuff. So.
Wow.
That's kind of the general skill. If you guys have any questions, feel free, I mean.
Well, I'm curious just where you see in our warrants, where there would be a someplace that could be used, like McCarty Cove. Is that big enough to have five acres?
Um, so, so there's two different difference. So between your title and subtitle, that's the culture. Towns aren't having ready, forty, we're here in Taiwan culture and that's the aquaculture that occurs in one class of the people in clam. So you guys, someone wanted to lease that, you guys can veto that or bring me if you wanted to. So you don't really have to talk about that too much, but then. Both sides of McCarty Cove, as soon as you get past that, um, the even timeline, pretty much where the average time drones to, once you get past that extreme waters, they call it. That's technically some type of water entrance for the state without jurisdiction. So it's not going to stop anyone from putting an aquaculture lease outside of there. And this is another, you know, it's not a common point, but if you put this aquaculture lease in the main, the main channel that goes in Point Bay, so before our clams, you don't have a chance to get any food. It goes through all those oysters and I'm not even talking like a million, it's up to like twenty million oysters. Like that's probably more, or that's probably more oysters than we have planned in the bay. And so. I'm not saying something like that would even be able to fit in your current though on the other side of it. But definitely, looking at itself, um, and I've been looking at, I'm spotting a flash of clams and stuff. I'm very well aware, I like walk down, I'm doing house to get me cardio and stuff. But on the other side, your cardio is actually perfect for aquaculture. I don't want, I don't want to say that for anyone interested in putting something there, but, um, yeah, it's perfect for aquaculture. You couldn't put a ton in there. Um, my suggestion would be if you wanted, you want aquaculture, which I don't think it's a problem on a small scale. I think it's a great way for fishermen and other people to have side income. Maybe you can just do it as a full-time job. But yeah, you could have, uh, you could have many people working the water out there. From McCarty Cove all the way to Fowles Cove, it's kind of like a bowl shape. It's perfect because you got deep flushing water, you're getting a lot of salty water coming from the ocean, very high in oxygen. And then it comes up and has a chance to slow down. Definitely, it's a lot more shallow.
Well, that would be putting it out into the flow of the Shuichik River.
It's technically would be out of the main flow of the Shuichik River because it would, you know, here's the channel, main channel that is really, really deep. And then it comes up to this embankment. And you would, you have to split stuff there if you wanted to. And it could be a good thing in small scale. That's another thing I want to mention too, is like by the aquaculture can be really good if you're using it to, for example, um, complement the the wild resource, like in Brunswick, for example, one of my best friends, he has a one point five acre cohog farm. And it's sitting on a monclat in Brunswick, it's in a title farm. And maybe go off right next to this farm now, and some of the best video in Brunswick, because all of his cohogs have spawned out. It started not laying on air. So that's a benefit for it. And also in our, uh, in our shellfish program in Brunswick, we're growing seedlings in an upland and planting them alone. And that's technically aquaculture too. So there are a lot of useful applications that the town can use. But there's also a lot of potential negatives if people with money come to town and say, we want to claim this here. They can lease it out for like twenty years and a lot of stuff happens in twenty years. So. That's kind of it. And not just on that side too. All, all up and down, pretty west, all up and down the same way. This far, this would be great for there. Any sort of like oyster aquaculture, anything like that. I mean, you know, the problem is too, is there's nothing saying that you can't place it like right next to a lobster though either. You know, like we're seeing studies actually that say, um, it was a study on a muscle farm and it was a slave lobster. In a lobster there having like a seventy percent reduction in six, six cool molding. So they pretty much died before they could finish molding and stuff. And so, yeah, there's, there's definitely a lot of potential negatives and we don't even have a whole research because they don't even want to touch doing it. Usually when you got an industry boom like this, where you're promoting an industry to grow, give some of the background research first. In the month of the year.
So you just mentioned, uh, you know, lobster. So in terms of where lobster pots are located, wouldn't this be, you're adjacent to, say, the aquaculture? And wouldn't that additionally be an issue for, for fishermen being able to do?
Yeah, well, it should be, yeah. And it's it, it's unfortunately, it's not many regulations, I'm considering for things to consider because the DMR, I mean, resources, it's processed, people can go through to get an aquaculture lease. And it is rigorous, but for some reason it doesn't include the important things like existing fishers and how it impacts. So, yeah, potentially put it, me, if there's, if there's a lobster pot there, you could slip, yeah, live it on top of it, but you could put it right next to it. We say you pulled the traps up for the season and they got that lease when the traps weren't there. Can't do anything about it. And actually this happened in McQuaid Bay, at least I was referring to. There were several lobstermen fished that area, maybe not for me. I mean, obviously they protested. This was a huge thing. So for some reason it's still, so.
How long has it been there?
It's been there since twenty seventeen was when it was officially officially put in there. But before that they had, you know, LTA's, which are limited purpose aquaculture sites, which are a lot smaller in nature. And that's what you do when you test them on an area to see if it's going to be viable or not. So it's been a long-term plan, but it's been there for about five years. So, and they do have, I, I think that you're very extreme in fact, depending on some of the scale and like location on the clam population as well. Like if you look at the Damaskata River, all you need to do is look at the historical landings and you see that Damaskata used to have a pretty good clamming and it's a perfect river system for clams. It's gone all the way down. People do not even dig the Damaskata River anymore. And it's happened in correspondence since aquaculture has been, so. And they're competing, they're competing filter feeders. So that's pretty much all that it is. And if you're giving priority to, because when you're doing aquaculture, you just give priority unnaturally to these five valves by putting them on the surface where it's a lot more nutrients. It's actually all, for all the larva from lobsters, fish, worms, clams, that's where all the larva sits on top and they're filtering through it. They're not necessarily eating it, but they're filtering it and they're rejecting it as pseudo pieces. And that stuff just falls to the bottom and sticky clumps and doesn't, so that's another. But I mean, I go on and on. I do have.
Wow.
But I just, it sounds like you could. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't want to bore you guys.
I would be curious, Mary, uh, is you, you can send some response. The green crabs, it, it's a different discussion with the current two, two. I mean, that's the big challenge.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, so I could hear someone make an argument that because of the impact of green crabs and, and the degradation of plumbing, that that fishery, that activity may not sustain people. Maybe oysters on a large scale is, is an option. So you wouldn't necessarily have climbing going on still because it's already decimated.
Yeah.
We, we have a, um, a shellfish committee and it would be wonderful if you could, um, maybe come and talk to them. Because they're the ones who, you know, are very interested in clamming. They're the ones that are interested in, in doing the research right now in green crabs. And I can tell you that, um, in a week or so, we're doing, um, our town meeting and we'll, we'll be talking about ordinances and, and this one will not go into. Yeah, that would be something we'd have to look at later, but I would, I would want the shellfish committee to, to look at that. And did you give us your information on one of these sheets here?
I can write it down.
Yeah, that would be great because, um.
Yeah, you have your influence here, but that's not who you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
And your contact info.
Yeah. If I can just write it out. I, this is only an initial thing too. I just want to like get people aware of everything and then, so I, I want to talk to way more people in the community because a lot of times you could be stepping on people's toes and stuff.
Not with ordinances.
Yeah.
Never.
But yeah, the whole argument about the green crab thing too, it's very true. Clamming could be dying out. I mean, I don't see it completely dying out. And there are ways that you can actually address that by using other warm water species like cohogs. They're very resilient to green crabs. And if the water gets warmer, it keeps getting warmer, we can even implement cohogs.
So you're kind of going with the environmental flow.
Do you have an email?
Sorry, did I not read that?
Yeah. I'm going to send it to the, um, I'm going to send a note to the shellfish committee and just let them know that.
I want to say one more thing too. It's just that.
I could break minutes.
So. Green crab could be the, you know, yeah, of a time issue, um, get to the point where it's not really worth it to do as a full-time job. Now, this is an opportunity, being a small-scale aquaculturist, coming from the harbinger background, I think it's perfect. If you want to integrate that small scale, where you have people potentially working together in co-op, or you just say, okay, we're going to limit the size down to five acres. So no one can have more than five acres and give them twelve, or even less than that. A lot of towns actually do want to do less than that. And it gives us opportunities for these fishermen to get into small-scale aquaculture, continue making a living on the waters and not actually have an impact. And they're actually the best stewards of the water because they've been working in the water they're in here. And Georgetown Island is actually doing something like that, was almost an aquaculture with a co-op. Where they leased out, I think fourteen acres of, um, what, piece of water of, it's near Robinburg Cove. And then they get people on board that want to do it and then they vet them and they all have two acres and they work together. They share the equipment. Or straight, you know, like you work in the water and it's each other, piece of water. So.
Yeah, you know, you don't think about water. You know, water's out there. It's like, it's not on my property anymore, but somebody, and I know there are always fights about water rights and stuff, but, and I know with, with the lobster and the whales and whatnot. It seems to come through. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, any questions from any of you all for Camden? Yeah. Jim, did you have anything to, to add?
No. I feel the same as everybody else. It's an awakening. You know, I've heard of these aquacultures, but I haven't really heard the other side of the story. Yeah.
I think Westport probably has less of the potential of being taken advantage of because there's honestly not as much space compared to other places. But further challenge too, and getting the DMR to really start implementing regulations and making sure they're taking care of the fisheries is getting as many towns as possible on board. And so we have, um, several towns that we've been working with. Several that have been working, which leads to the ordinance, you know, there are a few that actually have the ordinance, but it's, yeah, it's been working.
Certainly something that I don't think most of us have thought about and do need to think.
I've been thinking about it until all of a sudden, watching the clams got.
Yeah. So.
I do have a question for you. Have you seen any place along the coast of Maine where the big industry folks are coming in and buying up all the small people? So that it's actually pretty much small guys again, and now the spaces are taken industrial.
Yeah, that's, so that's what happened in the finfish world. Has it? It's moved to the oyster aquaculture, like very recently. And I think I expect it to continue to move that way. But with the finfish stuff, like, yeah, I mean, it's pretty much all owned by Cook Aquaculture at this point. I think they own like to six hundred acres of that water, which is a lot. The oyster aquaculture, yes, they are like the oyster company on the front, for me, McQuaid Bay, they are a bigger one here and they strategically position themselves where pretty much no one else can use that water for small-scale aquaculture. Um, because for some reason the DMR doesn't have restrictions on everything based on fisheries. But in other aquaculture, you have to be within like a certain range. So, yeah. Um, I definitely see that being a problem in the future. And that's kind of why we're trying to get there.
Definitely appreciate your you're giving us a heads up here.
Well, I figure, I mean. Do you have to mind if I take a picture for social media?
No, we're actually taping, so, uh.
I, I know, I hate doing this, but my boss always asks, like, is this sure?
You stand up? I don't know.
I appreciate it. And, uh, I'll definitely try and mention again to Lincoln and see if we can set or something that's I like there until I, you know.
For sure. Great, great.
I have never met him actually, no. I just thought it, I saw who is the, uh, chairman of self issue.
Well, Donna's gonna shoot him an email too. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know Lincoln. And actually I was on the shellfish committee at one time. I love playing in the mud. So I'll, um, I'll send them a note. I have a little note here to do that.
Let's move back to Westport. Love to be.
Great, great. Young people. Right. That, that was very informative. Yeah. Uh, next thing, uh, question we had, uh, somebody asked if, um, somebody from the history committee asked if we could sell raffle tickets at the town, um, town meeting. And I told her I would present it to the board. Um, I know we sell hot dogs and coffee at the board meeting, at the, the town meeting, the regular town meeting that'd be next Saturday. But she wanted to know about selling raffle tickets for the, um, for the big, um, the quilt, the quilt for the history committee. And I, I assume it would just be in the back someplace when people come in if they wanted to buy something, but um, I told her that I couldn't make that decision, that it was a decision we needed to make together. But thinking that something is already sold there. It's like it's, and as long as it wouldn't be taking away from the meeting. Probably Gay that would be in charge of it. So I know she would respect that. So my question is, are you, you two okay with that?
Just, you know, negative, it takes up space. Knowledge, you could bring out private the meeting is.
Well, she might not bring maybe just a picture of the, yeah, because you're right.
Possibly, but, but also even if it takes up space, it could be taken out, of course, the meeting. So you really want to be able to do it before.
If it's a nice day too, you should be at a table outside in the front. Yes, you know, people can't miss it then. So I can, I can't think of a, other than that, of a negative for not.
No, I think it's, it's great.
And she, she would be in charge, she would be responsible for it. And we know Gay, so.
Well, Mary Ellen.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's Mary Ellen's.
Yes, that's right. Well, between Mary Ellen and Gay, I would have trouble with neither of them. Yep, yep. All right. So I will let her know that it's, it's an okay. Okay. I'm not even going to pass a, do a, it just feels like a yes, no response. Um, all right. So I need to contact Mary Ellen. Let me just write myself a note here. One more thing to do. Any other, uh, citizens issues while I have three citizens there? Nope. All right. Uh, next on our agenda is roads. And I know one of the things on the roads was, um, the salt, um, contract. And the bid on that, did you get a chance to see?
So again, it's, we, we've, uh, just been, as the state wanted to to, to get the best price we can for salt next year. And, uh, what they came back for the proposal for Westport was eighty dollars a ton.
Which is less than.
Which is less than actually the last year. And, and we're asking for a hundred and twenty tons. Just so you know, the, the, we can take about a third less or a third at that price. So we don't have to take a hundred and twenty tons. We do need to take about ninety tons. You know, but we could take a hundred and fifty tons if we wanted more, which is one of the nice things that flexibility gives us.
What'd we, what'd we do last year?
Well, we had two in there to begin with. We had part one in there, then we had five one to finish out the year before it's gone. And then one, six, six, seven. We closed the two that was in there.
But Dale's using more salt.
People were, maybe this should have been a little more. More sand salt, sand being used. It's an effective way to treat roads. It cuts down about the sand, it cuts down about the sand that's going up on the side of the road. It has to bend off every few years. So look at my van, go up any ten-year-old temple.
Yep.
And it comes with a cost.
Mm-hmm.
But also in the back of my mind, I have to keep, uh. Freshwater. It's kind of.
Right.
And bounds.
Yeah.
Finding that balance. The salt on their roads is useless, you know. You gotta have some of the sand, sand. Silver and silver. You know, say. But, um, but so. Our old composition could have been thrown over the roads because it is, yeah, so.
Why don't you want to go there? Think about that. Yeah, yeah.
So. You know, Dale's a good guy, I think he overdid, but, you know, I think things were good. There again, you know, when you apply it, how you apply it, how much you apply.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
And it's hard to anticipate what our mentor will be like with me.
Right, we still have. Three quarters of a century, you know. We use a little more salt. Use a lot less than. So one inch, like. It's cheaper.
And so. Yep. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the statewide salt bid for a hundred and twenty tons. All in favor, sorry.
Right.
Alright, and any other updates on roads?
I'm watching my phone both last week, I think he sure.
Hmm.
It was point broken call there. They got, you know, it was very not. We started on Saltwell Road today, but still. When. When you first went there, first draw. We had some of that. That's where we worked today. We didn't go over on the ribbon. I'm working the way in. I'm working away with. We found, of course, not ball ever left credit.
Hmm.
Looking at the topography, that's where there was a tree there. On the side, I could channel. And then we just kept going like that on the hill. Then the process, right when the water was coming out. It was just like you showed, a piece of land, like that's just the burning all the water.
Hmm.
To the minimum rung, and that's where it did my hell. If you have it. Well, no, that's fair. But what we did there is a definite improvement in the water should. Follow the path.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I spent all day there. I had, you know, give a plan.
Did you have any trouble with the traffic?
Traffic was great. People on that road were great. I don't want to traffic.
Good.
Where we was working, we could keep lane open.
Okay.
Further in.
Yeah.
We need to be able to, uh. If the traffic was like it was today, we can get out of the way.
Okay. And I know you're working on it, so that's a good thing.
Yeah. Spreading with Congress, like the night of the summer off. Breaks pretty easy in summer off.
What'd you get today?
This stuff was. One spot, we're right up the road. I got about two feet and then it turned into. Something a little, but I'm standing far enough myself.
Okay, well, that's good.
The stuff in the road. Further down and in the ditch, that was pretty easy.
Sure your shoulders and your.
Well, I just go break. Well, I'm not just.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
For hearing protection, I hope.
Go back in the cab when you're outside.
Yeah.
So progress is being made. Then when I see the people down there.
Mm-hmm.
We must bless me today, um. Black Sabbath is like, I'm glad you're there. The effects of this is.
Yeah. I think people are grateful that you're doing the work.
Just couldn't justify doing something. You know, we gotta dig that spot back up again.
Right. Yeah. Great, great. Alright. Uh, anything on correspondence? I didn't have anything, anything today.
Nothing today.
Okay. Let's go to admin items and, um, we have a July meeting schedule, which. I feel like we really can't talk about until we have, um, a new person on board. Um, but I know we talked about meeting on the first of July.
Definitely, that was one.
Yeah, that's, we definitely will, um. Meet on, just so we can get started right away. Um, I would assume for right now. In, until we can actually talk to the third person, but. Uh, you know, in past years, actually we used to start at six instead of seven. We changed it to Ross.
Hmm, no, we always do it soon.
Hmm, yeah, I remember it was at six and we made it seven so you can come here. Anyway. So, uh, these are things you can, yeah, but anyway.
Well, you guess at the time.
Yeah, yeah, anyway, yes, but for right now, we'll tentatively plan and I'll let April know, tentatively plan for. Every Monday in April, uh, uh, July, right now.
Between each year, there's five of them.
Yeah, or we, we could wind up doing every.
Five first, definitely. Yes.
How's that? Yes.
Through June, yes?
Yep.
The next two Mondays.
Yep. So I, I'd actually, after tomorrow, actually we can, we could set. A date. Because tomorrow we'll have, hopefully. Unless there's a tie someplace.
And there, it's. The officers switched on July first.
Yeah, yes.
Basically, yeah.
Cause I remember years ago, if you were the last. He was a, they had a thing, one, not meeting.
Used to be, uh, yeah, and it hadn't been the past few years. Yeah. Yep, yep.
We think that's nice that the new person gets to sit up there because then people get to see them.
Oh, gosh, I didn't want that. There's some sitting up there. Did you?
Well, we have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they really like versus now, so they're full.
Yep, we, we can talk about that later, but right now, uh, April had this on her agenda and so we're planning July first for sure. After that, we'll talk about it. Well, our next thing on admin items is to appoint Mary Ellen Barnes to, um, the member of the planning board. She was an alternate. And she has, um, agreed to be a, um. Regular member. And I don't think we have assigned, he's the same, a voting member, yes. So, um. Yeah, I think it's just an automatic change. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mary Ellen Barnes. To a voting member of the planning board. What have they said?
Second?
All in favor. Alright, um. That's all I have for admin items. Do I have anything from you or you? Okay, any other legal business? Seeing none, what I would like to do is propose an adjournment, but we also have a board of assessors meeting that we need to, um, have. Uh, a meeting on, so we have to close out one meeting and start another. So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, adjourn this solid fourth meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. And Jeff, your chair.
So creating the board of assessors, we have a letter that you can just want to Nancy Appleton. Um, she built structures on. Uh, land that was in tree growth, uh, and that, so that was considered to that use of the land. So we're. Uh, going to find there for the removal of that property out with tree growth, yeah, well. You, there's a, a formula that you use to figure the difference between the tree growth value, you know, the regular value. Uh, and then it's important, we don't help them, or you have some, it's defined. So it's a fine of sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one thousand cents. So I'd like to move that we, uh, issue this letter to, um, Nancy Appleton.
Wait a second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Okay.
And by the way, Nancy's well aware of this, uh. This is not going to be a surprise for her.
And the second item on our agenda is, uh, the approval of a certified ratio declaration for two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we actually just did the written ratio declaration for two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, we never submitted it for two thousand and twenty-three, um, so we're sort of doing that. And it, uh, it's just sort of like we're at a hundred percent valuation for this part here. That was, uh, we, that's why we did the factoring that we did a twenty-five percent on the shield. Was so it would be able to do the higher self, you know, the life mission. So I'd like to move that we approve that certified ratio declaration.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. So we need to sign it or we don't. No, we're, I think we already did.
What did we do?
Yeah, so technically we're just, we're just approving something.
Right, right. In fact, we think sort of, and that's something we should have done.
Yeah.
To make that.
So I move that we, uh, to drill this meeting of one session.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Okay. And I'm going to stop the reporter.